The members in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report this evening, resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time, the only thing on school building needs.
Mr. Joe Flur and I will be going to Boston on November 20th for the MSBA selection of architects for the new school.
Okay, great. Any questions from the committee members?
Great.
Seeing none. Policy committee, Ms. Cregan.
Yes, Paula G. Quinto and I met informally to look at different policies coming up, so since we have Aiden and Rosemary here, we can schedule a meeting of our subcommittee after this meeting.
Great. Questions, concerns? Seeing none. Student support committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Personnel committee, nothing to report this evening, executive committee either unless anyone on the committee would like to comment. And student report, Matthew.
All right, so unfortunately Lisa could not be with us today because she's away. Still take over.
Okay.
So there's not much to report today. Relatively accomplished report. So the science session, the science AP Saturday session, which is really beneficial for the students, they've seen these records and just the statistics, I mean, people really do better on the AP tests if they do attend the Saturday sessions. And the AP Saturday session for science, which encompasses all science subjects, will take place December 15th, Saturday, 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So these do help.
What was it dating in?
December 15th. The eighth annual canned food drive initiated last Thursday, it'll go until November 15th, which is next Thursday. Students and faculty are encouraged to bring any donations and or cash to the main office or see Catherine Woods, which is the, who is the advisor for this. Professional development day takes place tomorrow for teachers, Pittsburgh High teachers, so classes will not be in session as a result, but the offices still, the offices still will be open, so if you have any questions, you can still go on there. The unified basketball game will take place on Thursday, November 8th at 3:30 p.m. at the Pittsburgh High Fieldhouse. It'll be Pittsburgh versus Auburn. The annual flag football games are scheduled to take place on Thursday, November 8th at 5:30 p.m. at Crocker Field. And moving on to quarter one report cards, quarter one grades just closed last week. They'll be issued, report card will be issued next Friday, November 16th. Or two weeks from now. Yeah, two Fridays. Breakfast with the bands will take place on Sunday, November 18th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Pittsburgh High cafeteria. For any questions or concerns, please contact Tabitha Greenly, who's the Pittsburgh High band director. For the MCAS test make-up dates, for the students who were absent or didn't bother showing up at all, Thursday, November 8th, Friday, November 9th, and Tuesday, November 13th for English Language Arts, and Wednesday, November 14th, and Thursday, November 15th for mathematics. Veterans Day observance is Monday, November 12th, so there will be no classes in session that day for Pittsburgh High. Early release day, Wednesday, November 14th for picture day, for retakes for students who are absent, who didn't show up, scheduled for Tuesday, November 27th at Pittsburgh High School, all day. The long-awaited Thanksgiving Day football game will take place on Thursday, November 22nd at 10:00 a.m., Doyle Field in Leominster. And for the athletic schedule, of course, as always, visit the Pittsburgh High website. That's it.
Questions? Yes.
I just, I do have a question for you, as an addition, because I happen to be there on Saturday, so the Pittsburgh High marching band came in second in the division.
Oh, wow. Very good.
Gold. And we're, yeah, they were really great. They'll do that show at the Thanksgiving game, but it's a really entertaining piece and it's to Little Shop of Harpers, so it's fun. But I do have a question for you. What's your advisory experience like, so as you have these advisories at school? I know there was one like last week, right? What is your personal experience with it? You can, you look like you're gonna say something.
So I'm not gonna go into, too much into my personal experience, just because I don't wanna, you know, get too much biased there. But I will say that from what I've seen, it is very helpful for students who, you know, we do, it's not really a routine thing that we follow. Usually the things that we do are issued by the principal or by administration, like the Alice Drill that we recently initiated, and it's every year, so we do it every year. It's also for students to get notified about really important things, seniors, it's really important for them to, especially some of them don't really know too much about Common App or the college process, so some of them go through that during advisory. Report cards, progress reports get issued during advisory. So it's just a mix of different things, I think. Yeah, I, so far, that's really all I've seen. I mean, there could be other things we see, but overall, my personal experience, I would say, I've just seen that it works for what administration and what the principal want. I don't know if teachers like it, I don't know if teachers, you know, have a favorable, favorable, you want it. That's something that we'd have to ask, so.
Do you give feedback on your experience in advisory? Is there any feedback taken about that?
Yeah, we do. We do talk about why, some kids, you know, some students don't feel that it's necessary. They think, okay, report cards, you can just mail them to our house, or you can just hand them out during class periods. But overall, I think advisory, the purpose of advisory is to do things that you wouldn't otherwise do in a regular, during a regular class period, like in Alice Drill, we did that during regular class periods. But to talk about it, you know, teachers, with all honesty, teachers aren't gonna go through the whole presentation about Alice in the regular classes, so I think under that supervision with advisory, they will do it, because I do know that teachers sometimes don't follow those guidelines that they should be following, but advisory really helps kind of put that into effect. So like the Alice Drill, right? With report cards, progress reports, I'm, yeah, we're still trying to figure out, I guess, the purpose of it as well. I am, to be honest. There's just a whole mix of things that happens. But again, things that wouldn't otherwise happen in a regular school period.
But you don't fill out a survey at the end of the year or after those sessions?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks.
Matthew today interviewed myself and that mayor from the city to the east, sort of. He was impressed because it's the first time he had seen a high school to the caliber that we have here in Pittsburgh. Kept, just was beyond himself complimentary. Not, no. I'm kidding. But he did a great job today, that was a lot of fun. We talked about the Thanksgiving game coming up, the history of it all, and because we're both, well, I am anyway, so old. Do you remember the first time you saw a Thanksgiving game? I said, I don't know. It was probably 10. Yeah, that was a couple of years ago. So, but you did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Approved minutes for the previous school committee meeting, October 15, 2018. Make a motion to approve. Motion made to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and it is unanimous. We are, I think it's the committee's wish to go into executive at the close, at the close of the meeting, purpose of contract and personnel matters, correct? Right, thank you, superintendent. Communications, Pittsburgh Education Association, policy support.
Adam, please. Good evening. So thank you for this opportunity to address the school committee. I am Adam Cordio, president of the Pittsburgh Teachers Association, and I'm here with Katie Schmidt, the treasurer of the Pittsburgh Educators Association, and we're here tonight out of deep concern about the ability of Pittsburgh public schools to meet the needs of all of the students we educate. Our concerns stem from the fact that Pittsburgh public schools, like school districts across the Commonwealth, have been severely underfunded for many years. A bipartisan commission determined in 2015 that Massachusetts public schools are underfunded by $1 billion annually because the formula used to calculate state aid to schools has not been properly revised or updated. So the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center calculated what districts would receive if the formula used to determine Chapter 70 aid to schools using the recommendations of the commission that studied school funding were brought up to date. I'm gonna pass it over to Katie at this point, getting into money, she's our, she's the money, money person, our treasurer. She's also on the Mass Teachers Association Board of Directors, so she's at a higher level within the rank and file of the union, so Katie, I'm gonna...
Yep, this check represents close to $13 million that we, Pittsburgh, the district, would get if they fixed the funding formula. $13 million annually. And so we are here to ask, do you have a copy of the resolution?
If you're gonna do it, I have it.
Okay. The FEA has signed the resolution as a body, and we're here to ask in partnership that you join us, and also sign the resolution and push the legislature to fix the foundation budget finally this year, to get it done and get the extra 12 million that we desperately could use.
Who's this addressed to? Who's this gonna be going to?
Specifically?
Is it legislature or is it?
The legislature.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Speaker of the House and the Senate President. Okay.
Governor Al Soro, get a copy?
Yep.
Yeah.
There are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about 15 school committees in the state so far that has passed a resolution in partnership with the union, and should you choose to do so, I would like to add you to that list with the MTA to show our commitment together.
Would you mind, and we all have a copy, but would you mind reading a copy of the resolution so people who are here in the room and watching at home will know what specifically?
Absolutely. Adam will.
So the resolution in support of full funding for our public schools, whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. Whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services, and whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring Pittsburgh up to $12,776,426 in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth, and whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the Pittsburgh School Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019.
Good. How many did you say have signed on?
Signed so far. I just printed this today, it was about 15.
15.
Yep.
That's all.
Chickapee, Fall River, Framingham, Lexington, Pittsfield, Springfield, Malden, and others. I don't know when the last time MTA updated the list, but...
The geography is gonna be very revealing on this. You obviously see it now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Boston-centric, probably won't be interested.
Um, we have the, the list.
Probably the closest you had was Lexington, I think.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think, I don't have it here, it's at the table. Just the amounts that Worcester, I think, is 69 million that they're owed a year.
Yeah. When's the last time they adjusted the foundation budget? 80s maybe? Was it? I don't know.
It was around Ed Reform. 90s.
Okay, yeah.
I do have data and graphs and other things that you can have.
Yeah, because it was part of the Ed Reform.
Everyone should be signing up on this, every kid.
And I'm sure they will, we're just starting to push, so.
Okay, good. Oh, yeah.
So I guess just a point of, I guess, clarification, so the Mass Budget Resource Policy Commission, where this 12 million, almost 12.8 million number came from, that's a FY 2023 number. Largely, there are urban superintendents, there are two large urban districts, Worcester being one of them, who has been out doing, let's say, roadshows to various communities, educating the importance of an updated funding formula.
Yep.
Just for the public watching, two of the main expense items that have not kept up or that have exceeded the inflation have been the increase in special education obligations of communities and healthcare costs. So the urban superintendents are trying to coordinate a day in early January, January 8th, where there will be several events happening around the state, and we may be hosting one at Pittsburgh State University.
Excellent. Good. You may want to send those to the, to the chairs of the education committees in the House and the Senate, so they get a heads up with it, too.
Division nine, which is cities, we've been involved with that, the school committee's been pushing this through Sonia Chang Diaz and Alice Pierce.
Yeah. And that's where we went to, at Worcester, you remember that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Oh, yes.
I need a little bell. I believe that there's, I know there's at least talk of presenting a case against the state for, for lack of equality in distribution. Does anybody know where that stands? And we might know better after our convention. But are you folks aware of that? That the, the different districts may bring a lawsuit against the state?
MTA is actively involved.
Actively involved, so this is just one step of you gathering support?
Yes.
What would you like us to do tonight? Anything? Adopt this. Adopt it. We'll adopt, yeah.
Yep. And then most likely we'll be bringing other actions forward as time moves on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept and support the resolution as it was read tonight?
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the resolution as read. FEA policy support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the lead on it.
Do you like your $12 million check?
Yeah.
We're moving into public comment, if there anyone wishing, if there is anyone wishing to make a public statement, there is a five-minute limit, please come to the center table, identify yourself, and seeing none. All right, we're moving on. Superintendent's report, Mr. Joe Flur.
Great, thank you, Matthew. So tonight, we're recognizing the Unified Basketball coaches here, and Brian Baxter is here with a couple of students, Jake Tebow and Rachel Romero.
Good evening and thank you for having us. I just wanted to explain a little bit about Unified Sports. Unified Sports is an inclusive sports program that unites Special Olympic athletes, okay? That's individuals with intellectual disabilities and partners, and those are individuals without intellectual disabilities as teammates for training and competition. Three models exist within Unified Sports, competitive Unified Sports, Unified Sports Player Development, and Unified Sports Recreation. I think that Unified Basketball competes in a Unified Sports Player Development model. What that essentially means is some of our partners have a little bit more athletic ability than our athletes, all right? And the idea is to develop them in this particular sport and exercise. It has truly been a pleasure to coach these kids this year. The Unified Sports Program at FHS is just another testimony to the wonderful inclusive environment that exists and has existed at FHS for a very long time. At FHS, our athletes are treated like rock stars by the rest of the school. It is truly a great thing to watch, whether you're on the bus on the way to a game and there's four or five sports teams getting ready to go practice and they're out there sharing the bus as you leave, or if they're coming to the games, we do have a game Thursday, which will be our last home game of the season. This program is rewarding for all involved, the athletes, the partners, the coaches, the fans, and the stands. Unified Sports Program at FHS also benefits from a best buddies club that we have at the school. So we have a bunch of kids that are constantly helping these kids out, so they're always around as well. And inclusion truly is the red rate away. So I just wanted to let people know that that's going on at Pittsburgh High.
Great. If you have any questions for Rachel or Jake or...
You did say it's been going on for a long time. Do you know when the unified program started at the high school?
I think the basketball program might be, this might be the fourth year of the basketball program and the track program. This is my first year being involved in it. What I know has been going on at Pittsburgh for a long time is the inclusive attitude. That was there when I was a student, 30-plus years ago, and it's there now.
Nice read up in the Sentinel. Nice to read it.
So Jake and Rachel, did you tell us what you do? What's your part in the program?
So basically, are we, it's like a team, so basically, we're not like out there like necessarily playing, but we're out there, you know, competing like members of the team.
Yeah, we give them passes and like encourage them to shoot when we give them the ball and stuff, and just make sure that they're having fun and knowing what they're doing.
Do you guys practice?
Yeah, we have practices like once a week sometimes, actually.
In unified, in this model of Unified Sports, there'll be three athletes on the floor and two partners.
Okay.
And in our, in our division, is all schools do the same thing. Our, our partners, they rebound the ball, they'll pass the ball, they don't shoot. It's all, it's all about the athletes, and that's, that's the, that's the beauty of it. It's really a lot of fun.
Good.
What other communities are involved, Brian?
We play, this year, we, well, there's, there's Midwatch North and Midwatch Central, and there might even be a South, and we'll, we group up with a bunch in the jamboree, but we played Oakmont, Groton Dunstable, North Middlesex, Auburn, and Littleton this year. Those are our games.
I'm sorry. So what got you, either, both of you interested in doing the program, and then does it lead to further, I know you mentioned like there's a lot of inclusive, inclusivity at the school, does it lead to like other environments in the school where you'll see kids that you play with, and I don't know, does that like increase sort of their sense of belonging in the school?
Yeah, definitely. Like I didn't know a lot of the kids before I got on the team, but once I did, I, I got to know a lot of the players that have the special needs, and I see them in the hallways and they go, hi Rachel and stuff, and I give them a high five, and they always seem happy, and it's good that I'm like, I get to know them now.
What made you want to get into the program?
Well, Mr. Baxter asked me at first, but I had seen the games before, and I didn't even know that it really existed like that, but then I saw and I thought that that'd be really fun to do.
That's great.
Same for me. Last year, I went to, I think, one game, and I thought it was just for basketball players to be part of, and then this year, Mr. Baxter mentioned to me how he was taking it over and he'd like for me and a few other of my friends to play, and without hesitation, I said, yeah.
That's great.
Just like to thank Mr. Baxter for coaching and his continued involvement in the Pittsburgh schools. You know me, I'm old, I like to talk, but Brian, Brian, I used to kid Brian about, I wanted him to become a major league umpire, because when I was coaching Little League and he was about 15, and he used to do a great job working with the kids, and his mom and dad were very much involved with the Little League in Pittsburgh and the minor league, and they missed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stevens, appreciate it. And thank you both and your, your other classmates who are involved, because I think it's a great program. It's great that you do this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, and next, we're gonna have a couple more athletes come to the table for the Wendy's High School Heisman School Winners, and that's... Now, I know there was an article in the Sentinel, can each of you talk a little bit about the award and a little bit about, because also recognize your academic achievements, too? So.
Well, this award is usually given to seniors that are dedicated to their sport and also academics and community service. I think it's been an honor to get this award, and it's kind of a reflection of what we've done throughout the four years we've been in high school, and it's been awesome for Pittsburgh to get this recognition, too, so.
She took all her time.
Spot, I mean.
Maybe you could talk about the pool of applicants, or like how, how did they choose you guys?
You know, I'm not really sure how they chose it, I just, but I know that, yeah, you needed to be, definitely needed to be the higher, of higher-ups on the academics, you definitely needed to be a student athlete, and you definitely needed to be a part of your community. You couldn't be some, like focused solely on the academics or solely on the athletics, you had to be a part of your city or to be a part of your community in order to win.
Is it a central mass thing? Is it like a division-based?
This is a national overall, but we were recognized in the school.
That's fantastic.
There are different rounds of it, so you, we were like the school winners for Pittsburgh High, and then you could be, and you could go on to the state round and then the national round, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So what's, what sports do you both compete in, and what, could you talk a little bit about some of the community activities that you've been involved with as well?
So I run cross-country and indoor and outdoor track, and I, for my junior and senior year, I've been on the MIAA Student Advisory Committee. Through that, we've done, we've worked with cradles to crayons, we've helped at local community farms, we've worked with Special Olympics as well. I'm also a member of the Current Events Club at Pittsburgh High, so.
I'm a football player, I'm actually the quarterback of the football team, and I also do...
That's right. I said, that's right. I said, I'm looking at Andrew Brooks, I'm saying, you're the quarterback, that is right. Very good, you know who you are.
And now the mirror does.
I've only seen you with your helmet on, you know what I mean?
You couldn't tell by my height? With the shorts around the top.
That's very important, too, your height, that's very important.
Well, for community service, I've, I've worked in the Park Hill Park, I've cleaned up that area a couple times. I've also been a referee, helping out a POW group that does the flag football up by the park near St. Anthony's. football up by the park near St. Anthony's. I'm also part of the Student-Athlete Council that does a sports fair every year. I help the school take down the gymnastics that they have, the gymnastic mats and stuff that they have in the gym when the gymnasts come. And then I'm part of the National Honor Society, so I help them with the 5K run that they do. And I also, because I'm on the football team and I'm part of the Student-Athlete Council, I help out Coast Cusenza with the Long Joe Bike Race.
Excellent. You throw a mean ball, too.
Thank you.
It's really dope.
Could I, you two, what are your plans next year? What are you thinking of? I know that everybody's got their deadlines kicking in at this point about school, but what are your plans going forward?
Well, I'm planning to go to college. My top choice school is UMass Amherst, and I want to major in elementary education.
Very good.
We need you there.
I also, I also want to go to college, and my top choice is actually Bryant University. And I'm looking into finance major in the school.
Well, you know, of course, you have to win the Thanksgiving game, or they won't accept you.
No pressure.
He called them, darn it. If they lose, he's out.
I gotcha.
All right, good.
Number one on my list.
Seriously. Let's go.
I thought he was gonna say seriously.
Congratulations.
Great job, you guys.
Congratulations.
Okay, now I'd like to bring Eva Kelly up to the table, talk about a couple things. Number one, there's an action item on the agenda tonight to limit school choice this year, and then also at the recent community forum, there was some conversation about the redistricting. So Eva is here to just give a review of the timeline and answer any questions that you might have.
So, does it matter which I do first?
Doesn't matter.
So, Mr. Jokelas, thank you for having me tonight. Mr. Jokelas made me come in because of the concerns one of the parents brought forward when they were, you had a forum for the public to come and ask and put their comments about our new superintendent. And I just wanted to go over the timeline that we used. So we did change the assignment process and procedure last year in the spring, and after several meetings at the central office, I came to the Student Support Subcommittee on March 29th with the new procedure. Then I came to the school committee on April 23rd and presented to the school committee. On May 3rd, after you reviewed the proposal twice here when I presented in the next meeting, I posted the new procedure on the Pittsburgh Public School website, and I organized a meeting for parents on May 24th. They knew about it beginning May 3rd from the Pittsburgh Public School website, and flyers that went out to all the schools, the fourth grade parents across the district. The meeting was very well attended. We had representatives from every school there, parents from every school. I shared the map, I talked about the procedure and the process this year. On June 25th, the assignment letters went out to all parents. And then from the 26th through August 10th, I was responding to phone calls, appeals. I met with parents several times on some occasions to talk to them about the process. Do you guys have questions about that?
Go ahead.
I think the question that the parent brought forward was, "What about next year?" So this parent has children in the elementary system right now and does not, and wants to know what's gonna happen for middle school. So where does that timeline happen, Eva?
So this year was usually, in the past, they begin the process in March, so we're hoping to start it in March this year. We were a little delayed last year because we were changing the procedure. So hopefully getting the word out in March, and, but still, even in previous years, the parents didn't receive their assignment letters till after the last day of school. So that's not going to change. I'd be glad to talk to anybody that wanted to call and ask me about the process and where their student would be assigned. They're welcome to do that at any time, but that's just why we...
Like, I think that's the part, that most parents don't really know that, right? Like, so they might say, I don't know, it just happens to be that they talk to somebody who might be in the know to say, "Well, you can call the enrollment office and you could talk to Eva Kelly." So I wonder if there's a way to push that information out. I mean, not to like make your life miserable before March, but I think for those parents who are, you know, for some parents, the time differences of the middle schools will really impact their lives. Like here, we get out at 1:30, 1:50 at Memorial, you get out at, what, 3:45 at Long Joe. So it's, so I think that a lot of people are trying to figure out how they, how they make their plans. And so I don't know if that could be, I know you guys send Title I surveys all the time, and those are really well received and people give feedback on those. I'm just thinking that maybe parents need to know that they can contact enrollment.
Sure.
It's just a point that I guess I have in general about the system, that I think we need, we need multiple avenues to get that information out to parents. And like some parents will look at Facebook, but not me, right? And some parents will look at the principal's Twitter's, but not every principal does Twitter. So it's just, there isn't a central clearinghouse of, you know, theoretically the website would be at, right? But I don't know if people know to go to those things, so.
So are you suggesting like...
You use connected?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could send a message.
That goes to everybody. And it's on the website as well?
I posted all the information after I came.
I'm just tossing this out to see, Bob, and Paula, you would have input in this, but would a public meeting present?
Yeah, I can do that. I did that last year.
Or the offer to parents come in, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be presenting how the process works.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. And I didn't do it till May last year just because of the, again, the delay process. We actually start kindergarten enrollment because the same rules apply to the incoming kindergarteners also. We start kindergarten enrollment April 1st, so I was thinking of potentially having those, the meetings for the kindergarten parents in March instead of April this year, and I could have a meeting for middle school parents at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
The more, the better. You know, I just think it's checking a box, checking a box, you know what I mean? There's another opportunity for you to learn how it works or to voice your concerns about it. I mean, you know.
Can I ask one more question, Eva? So the maps that you showed us and the districting, is that available online for parents to look at?
I do have a map. It's very difficult to make it so that you can really see the streets and post it on the website. I do have a map tonight. I can leave that for you to look at. We, as I said last year, we had to cut a line through the city. I know a lot of times parents feel like they're closer to Long Joe Memorial, but there's literally a mile and a half between Long Joe Memorial, and it's a very densely populated area between the two, so I had to draw the line somewhere there. Again, I have the map with me.
Could that be a PDF that goes up on the site, or that...
People want to see their streets, and it's, you can't see them.
The resolution.
The resolution is...
Even if we zoom in and like Google Map it, or...
Yeah, I tried it a couple different ways. I mean, I can continue to work on that. I have, you know, a dialogue describing the line, but it's difficult to conceptualize unless you're studying it as much as like I have over the past year. You know, and then we have those common areas around water and Main Street where we have those larger apartment complexes, and then we have the Winusnak Road area that has large housing complexes, and those are common areas and shared areas, so students could be assigned to different schools from those areas depending on enrollment. Our enrollment fluctuates so much throughout the year. Those are good spots to have common areas because we see students and families moving in and out of those areas a lot. So that's another thing that's challenging. And the elementary lines are a little bit different than the middle school lines just because of our busing, so. But I will work on that, and if you have any ideas about how to make that accessible.
We're the Community Development Office. They do a lot of map work, right?
Yeah.
Want to look at it?
Yeah, we'll talk to them.
Tom Skoroski, he's the Executive Director, Community Development.
Okay, thank you. So I'll work on that.
Okay.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Ms. Reynolds?
Is, will the final decision be black and white, or do some people, because I recall in the city when they set new lines for voting, and people never get over the fact that one side of the street goes one place and the other side of the street goes someplace else that they haven't gone to before.
So last...
There's real problems there that...
So I feel like we did a pretty good job drawing the lines last year. I don't anticipate moving too many lines, maybe broadening the McKay area a bit, only because we see kind of lower numbers at McKay for the upper grades, seven, six, seven, eight, as you can see in your enrollment numbers that you have in front of you. But I don't anticipate moving the lines this coming year, especially where we've designed it so we have those common areas and we can move kids around a little bit in there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and I guess I would hope that everybody could be happy if that's, I don't know how, perhaps, all these different meetings and different suggestions and things like that, there could be some pliability that would satisfy the parents.
So, and I, again, I accepted appeals, and I did make mistakes on some assignments, and when the appeals came in, I just want to let you know the process. So I spoke to every single person that calls fourth to fifth grade. I speak to them personally, because I know it's a really difficult time. It's a big time of transition for parents and students. And if I made an error, like if they had moved and we didn't have that information and they could bring me some evidence that they had moved, I would reassign them, and I would talk to those parents. Sometimes I missed a sibling that was already attending one of the middle schools. I fixed those, and I spoke to them personally and told them not to worry. They would be all set for the fall. But all the appeal letters, replies to the appeals, went out mid-August. So for the families, which I knew I wasn't going to be able to go around the rules we had set down, I did say, "The likelihood of me being able to reassign your student is very, very low, given the rules I've told you about." So although the parents didn't really find out till mid-August for sure, many of them knew exactly where they stood, and when they come to me before we even send out the letters, I will explain the whole process to them again. I'm not trying to hide information from anyone.
I think that the difficult thing is perception, right? So like, perception becomes a reality, right? If that, if there isn't anything to kind of challenge that. But when the parents spoke here, they seemed to be thinking that there was this balancing act going on to try to get test scores up, and there's like, there's nothing about that, right? But that's what circulates and that's what people talk about. And so I just think the more you can just kind of lay out the process, lay out the purpose of it, right? We all know the purpose ultimately is that we have to have transportation that makes sense, right? And that doesn't cost us a fortune. So I just think it's the perception that you're always kind of dealing with.
You know, I agree, but I have to say, this was my second summer in the enrollment office. So the first summer under the old system of school assignment, 7% of those fourth to fifth grade families appealed the decision, and this year, 7% of the families appealed the decision. So I don't feel like, you know, I don't feel that I, you know, misled anyone. I was very honest. I sat with them. I spoke to the mayor a couple times because I know some of the parents went to you. I walk you through the whole process and how I arrived at the decision.
And that's the important piece, is to be consistent.
You know, I am being consistent.
That's right, and fair, yeah.
And people don't always...
Right. They don't like the answer.
The answer, right, right, right. So, is that...
Yeah, it's an unenviable situation.
Oh, no, it's fine. It really, it's fine. They just...
I have no idea what that must be like.
They're just trying, they just...
I think you do.
Yeah, you think I do, right, yeah, yeah.
I don't actually have, if you want to speak about the school choice, closing the school choice, I don't have the, can I just... So if you want to look at the numbers, we're, I'm proposing maybe closing school choice K through eight, because if you look at our numbers in fifth grade, they're very high. Seems like there's, you know, just every other time we enroll someone, they're in fifth grade. Like the numbers just keep going up. I don't, I don't know what it is about that year. Kindergartens, also, I'm hearing from the principals that those classrooms are getting very high. They're a very young kindergarten from what I'm hearing, and I know Paula and Bob, they've come to you also. So I'm wondering if we could just close K to eight, leaving the high school and Goodridge open for school choice.
For the rest of this year.
For the rest of this year, yeah, just for the rest of this year.
So if we were to close it now, that's locked for the rest of the year? Could you rescind it? You could, a month from now or two months from now, whatever.
Until further action by the school committee.
Yeah, okay.
I know a lot of our programs also are very packed, K to eight.
Come on, kid, let's go. Who are you playing this weekend? Who you got?
Maynard.
That's it, right? Till Thanksgiving? Who?
FSU.
Okay, good. Good luck.
Who they playing this weekend?
Maynard.
I wouldn't know anything about that.
Oh, that's right.
That'll be a tough game.
Oh, yeah.
On the blue columns, Crocker 126.
So...
That's the number of school choice?
No, no, this is our total enrollment.
I'm sorry.
This, I'm sorry, okay, yes, this is our total enrollment. So when you see K, Crocker 126, that's how many students are in kindergarten and in Crocker. The 25.2 shows you that there's five kindergarten classrooms, four of them have 25 kids, and one of them has 26. So that follows all the way through. And as I mentioned, you know, I mentioned the lower numbers at McKay at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. You can see that there. But our fifth grade is big, and I know Long Joe has lower class sizes, but I'm telling you, at one point this summer, they were at 200 kids. But again, the rate at which our students enter and exit the school system, we're hovering around 20%, coming and going every year. We had 700 kids enroll last year and 650 leave.
It was part of our...
Between August 1st and May 1st.
Seven hundred kids in, 650 left.
Yeah, sometimes the same kids.
So justify, if I could, Ms. Mayor, the, so the issue with school choice is, if we're open, we're open. And the same issues around the variability of who enrolls can happen with school choice. So, I mean, we have, our kindergarten numbers are very high. If we're open for school choice, then kindergartners could apply to school choice. You know, we don't, in the mix of the process, we can't say, "Yeah, no, not so much here, not so much you in that grade at that school." So it, given the variability of our own, the folks who live in Pittsburgh, and the fact that we keep enrolling fifth graders, I agree, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
But every new family that's been in the enrollment center for the past two weeks has at least one child who's a fifth grader. It's amazing. But then they have siblings. So, and logistically, if you're a parent and you're gonna have somebody's school choice for one grade, I mean, you can't really manage multiple school districts with different times and transportation and traffic. times and transportation and traffic. So generally, we don't have a lot of school choice in during the school year. So as a financial issue, we were looking at those numbers. I don't have the specifics off the top of my head. We have a lot of school choice around high schools, Goodrich in particular. But similarly, at Pittsburgh High, there may be school choice in through the year. Or kids whose families move, but they want to finish their high school experience. I mean, that's pretty substantial. Lock that in. So they'll remain at the school. But the, the K to 8 numbers, I mean, 27.4, that means Memorial is 28, 27, 28, 25, 26. Long Joe, 26, 27. Those are big numbers at the middle school. And then 4th grade, I, I don't know what happened there, but that blossomed, 25, 26, or 26, 27 at every, in every classroom at the 4th grade. Those are big.
Doesn't look like that wave is changing, coming right up through.
No, no. We, we started a little lower in Kinder.
But then it got...
But it's only lower by one student. It's not lower by 10 per grade level. You know, it's one.
And when we started school, I think they were all at 22.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, we had a lot of people come in, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. So, moving on to budget items, we have several donations.
I'm sorry. Could we, I know breakfast for the bands is, is on here.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
It's on the agenda and just, just to plug it one...
I'll, I'll plug it one more time. Matt gave a good plug. So it is Sunday, November 18th, at Pittsburgh High School Cafeteria from 8 to noon. Tickets are $8, general admission, and children under 8 are free. So, November 18th, Sunday morning, 8 to noon.
It's at Pittsburgh High?
At Pittsburgh High.
Right, in the cab, yeah.
You just mentioned that the name SS.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So just a, a quick announcement. We have two teams from Pittsburgh Public Schools presenting at the upcoming Mass Superintendent's and Mass School Committee Convention. We have, and you have a folder with these, the slides are subject to change. But one team is our IT department, Eileen Spinney, Chris Turner, Jessica Stadalsky, our STEM specialist. And I'm going to run the panel. Jim is going to join us, I hope. And we're going to be presenting about ARVR. And one of the articles in the packet for you is the article that features, on the THE Journal, it's a national magazine around technology, and it features Pittsburgh Public Schools in the article. And then the second team is, I'm going to sit on a panel with our colleagues from Maple, and that's the Massachusetts Technology Using Group. And I don't have a complete slide deck. There are two other districts, Milis and I think Beverly. And Maple is facilitating that. But there's some information on, Mr. Stevens is going to join us on that panel. We're featuring Footsteps to Brilliance as our personalized learning towards early literacy initiative. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Could I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Because I think, Paula, you should just get so much credit for, for the amount of presenting that you've done around the state. I know you, you all went to Harvard University this summer too. I don't know if we actually ever had, heard an update about that or got any mention of that in this venue. But, I mean, the, the work that you're doing gets recognized largely because you're just really good at doing it. So I don't know, you maybe mentioned what happened at Harvard this summer, or, and then this is another great example.
Yeah, and we were invited, our team was invited to present at the annual International Harvard Leadership Academy. It's a week-long professional development session for educational leaders from around the world. And the leaders in the field of, I mean, it's Harvard, Harvard, MIT, they run the programs. And on this one particular day, the focus was digital learning, particularly around cutting-edge digital resources and how they connect to curriculum and teaching and professional development and student engagement. So we had the IT team, Chris, Jessica, Eileen, set up, brought the ARVR equipment. And we met teams from the Middle East, from Australia, directors of rather substantial networks of private schools. And the, our contact, Jeffrey, has now generated a network to which we get, it was a couple of Saturdays ago, we went into Boston for the day to meet others in a broader network in the higher-ed university system in the Boston area. So, I mean, cutting-edge, wild, what technology looks like in, I mean, there's actually, there started with one prototype. There are now 16 universities who have signed on to have an entire online bachelor's degree in biology, entirely online. Started with Arizona State University. I mean, they're state and private universities, but they're, they can tailor make it for your university, your student body, your point, your vision of what that course material should look like. They still have professors because the face-to-face is really supportive and helpful. But the, they're using AR and VR training across the world for careers. And, I mean, you can't, you can't crash a jet, but you can fly a simulator until you get it right. They use it in the aerospace technology business around the shuttle and all kinds of sort of industrial, military applications. Just amazing, amazing what's happening in the world. So, so that's one. And then the week after, next week, I think it's next week, on Wednesday, the DCU has a STEM, statewide STEM workshop, and we're presenting at that.
That's great. So thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a note, if you guys go to the page with the topographic, sort of 3D topographic map, I had the opportunity to see this in the technology office when they were getting it together. And as a, I was a geology major in college, and this is the most amazing educational tool for earth science I've ever seen. And I can see it really inspiring kids. And the imagination that our STEM instructors have is, is just beyond reckoning, you know? They're, they're open. They're, it's right brain, left brain connecting. So I'm looking forward to this. I will be, I will be happily to attend. And actually, our third group is going to be the pet therapy group. So Pittsburgh's represented three times at the Mass Association of School Committees and Superintendents Conference. And then the third group is pet therapy. So Mr. Waffles and Lady from Memorial School will be in attendance, getting everyone in the right frame of mind for learning about pet therapy.
Excellent. Just a... Okay.
Okay, back to budget items. So I'll just go through them quickly. First, we have a donation of a Dr. Dish basketball shooting machine from Harold Matteo, estimated value about $5,000. Next item is a $500 donation from Sheila Telomaraju. Next item is $100, estimated value of backpacks and school supplies from the dental office of Dr. Giannino. Then we have some binders from the Department of Developmental Services for $137. And that wraps it for the donations. And then tonight, there is a live and a dead warrant. The live warrant is for, if, can insert the dollar amount, it's $592,489.39. Tonight on the agenda, there is a school choice request. We didn't have an opportunity to have a resource subcommittee meeting, but the technology that's requested in number 1085 is largely for a replacement of technology at Memorial and Long Joe. And lastly, the, tonight, you will be accepting the $400,000 from the city to meet net school spending for this fiscal year. A large portion of that was for the unforeseen summer expenses related to Pittsburgh High this past summer.
Do you wish to bundle these?
Committee members, a bundle.
All right. Motion made, bundle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So 18-1077, up through and including 18-1087. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Unanimous. Thank you.
Make a motion. We have an executive session for the...
Right, for contract and personnel, right?
Correct.
Let's green these. We need individual vote, correct?
Yes, right.
Did you, do you have a blank?
Yes.
If not, I have.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yep.
Unanimous?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Thank you. We will, we will come out of executive session only to adjourn. Once we complete. Thank you.